All right. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's planning board meeting. Today is July 31st. I'll call this meeting to order. First, we'll take a roll call of members. Mike McLeod, Matt Steitzer is present, Julie Jackshaw, Bart Riley, Josh O'Neil, Mark Garf, Margot Enz, and Maisie Sulzer. All right, we do have a quorum tonight. All right, for folks here in the audience, our meeting tonight will consist of a presentation, and then we will call up any member of the public that would like to make a comment on the presentation, or any part of the zoning ordinance. We'll call for proponents and opponents, and then we will have a discussion among the board. Okay? So at this time, I'll turn it over to Director Crane to give us a presentation on the Butte Silver Bow zoning code update.
Chairman Steitzer and members of the board, thank you for having us this evening. We will be providing this evening a reiteration of the presentation that was provided by our contractor, Allison Mauch, at our June 26th planning board meeting, which is the same presentation that we have been providing to the public in the past six open houses that we have held at noon and 6:00 p.m. throughout the month of July. And we will begin tonight with that. Also, thank you, everybody, for braving the weather. I know it was difficult. Let the record reflect that Members O'Neil and Member Sulzer are present, please. So we'll begin this evening talking about the zoning code update and discussing first the key goals and contexts associated with the zoning ordinance rewrite. Beginning in approximately 2018, the Planning Department, under the Planning Board's direction, initiated a comprehensive rewrite of the Butte Silver Bow growth policy. This growth policy, which is now called the Comprehensive Plan, was adopted by the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners in 2021. This document had a significant public process that was attended to as part of that, and a number of -- the rain is very distracting, by the way, I'll just add that for a second -- that was held to understand the public's interest in the future land use priorities of Butte Silver Bow. It includes not only a vision statement for our community, but it selects specific provisions that will formulate and support the future development of our community, one of which those goals is the rewrite of the growth policy. Under Montana statute, comprehensive plans are the future land use planning document that is utilized to guide land use planning in the state, and land use regulations, which are applied through a zoning ordinance, are required by law to comply with those provisions. So to give general context and goals of that process, the code rewrite addresses the disconnect between the existing code and the historic and desired land use and development patterns that have been communicated by our public through the public processes. It ensures that the zoning districts in the community and their standards facilitate the desired development and redevelopment priorities expressed through the process. In addition, it improves the clarity and transparency in the regulations, and it updates antiquated definitions to resolve contradictions that are found within the previous or current code, and generally promoting a better mix of uses and incentivizing good development that aligns with Butte Silver Bow's comprehensive plan. Following the adoption of the Butte Silver Bow Comprehensive Plan in 2021, the Planning Department initiated an update to the process by conducting stakeholder meetings and engagement, and following by surveys, analysis, and an audit of the existing zoning code. The result of that was an audit document that identifies the key priorities of the community in updating the code. Primary among them is the transparency and the regulatory expectations that are provided to the community, among use contradictions and other challenges that lend to difficulty when development does occur in our community. The code rewrite formally began in July of 2023, but following staffing changes both in the Planning Department and within the Orion Planning and Design team, there have been delays in the drafting process. The co-draft did begin again in January of 2024, and the working draft was presented to you initially June 26th of this year, and is in the middle of a public process to solicit public input to shape the regulation further. As part of the audit outcome, a table of contents that generally reorganizes the code in a much more structured way was provided. The structural highlights are an organized document with ease of navigation and clarity aided by the table of contents. It combines both new and improved additions to the existing content, and it is designed to align with the Butte Silver Bow Comprehensive Plan. Chapter 1 of the new code is generally focused around key provisions. Within the existing code, the primarily focus is on title interpretation and purpose, establishing minimum requirements for the general welfare of the public, and it addresses conflicts with other ordinances and rules. However, the code does require a greater connection with state law and the Butte Silver Bow Comprehensive Plan in a much more explicit manner. Therefore, Chapter 1 retains the core purposes of promoting health, safety, and general welfare, but it explicitly links the ordinance to the Montana Code for Authority and Compliance. It emphasizes implementation of the Butte Silver Bow Comprehensive Plan. It introduces detailed rules for interpretation of district boundaries and how we as staff resolve conflicts, and it introduces detailed rules for interpreting zoning district boundaries and the resolution of conflicts when considering those boundaries. Chapter 2 focuses on the applicability and conformity matters.
Ms. Crane, I'm sorry to interrupt, I think you're one slide behind.
I apologize for that. The existing code concepts were integrated within other chapters such as the general provisions or specific district regulations, and no one chapter existed for applicability and conformity, leading to potential confusion and inconsistent application. The new code directs a chapter that explicitly outlines the jurisdiction of the ordinance to the zoned areas. It clearly defines compliance requirements for land use and structures. It emphasizes the uniformity within districts and the conformity with other laws, and it clarifies that which is more restrictive in provision to govern in the case of conflict, and also includes transitional rules or guidance to manage this shift from the current code into the new code. Chapter 3, zoning districts. In the existing code, zoning districts are defined in district chapters that are very heavy with text redundancies and contradictions. The existing districts were poorly aligned to the current and accepted comprehensive plan, and in general do not align with both the historic and desired modern development plans. For example, Butte existed and was developed far, far earlier than the 1976 zoning code, and over that time, developed in a haphazard and irregular pattern that resulted in the development pattern you see today in the historic area of the community. Through the public processes, we learn from our public that that is a desired development pattern that we would like to see emulated in the future. And so, the new code establishes a set of new zoning districts designed to align with the Butte Silver Bow Comprehensive Plan place types. Most districts are modified and renamed from their existing districts, and in some cases, new districts or overlay zones have been provided for context, character, and development styles that were not previously addressed. The code moves away from a pyramidal structure and focuses slightly more on the built form, and it creates new overlay districts that pertain to the Big Hole River and Silver Bow Creek, our historic district, the airport, and our neighborhoods. One key element in this you'll notice is the illustration in the bottom left-hand corner. Each of the districts will be discussed now using both narrative tables with the specific design patterns that are required in each district, and district illustrations to provide clarity to applicants on how we will interpret those definitions and how we will measure in the cases of our proposals. As part of the comprehensive planning process, a place types map, or a comprehensive plan place types map, was created. In general, the place types are addressed in detail within the comprehensive plan, indicating place types as varied as open lands, working lands, rural residential areas, areas in rural crossroads, suburban neighborhoods, suburban mix, the south and north corridors, the uptown neighborhoods, and our economic drivers. Under the current zoning district, you can see on the left-hand side the current use district, and how it aligns with the place type, and the proposed zoning districts when rezoning does take place. Chapter 4 focuses on building types, and this is a key change of this particular code. The existing code does not address building types, but rather, or the built form, but mostly the uses that can occur in the community. This approach focused primarily on land use rather than the physical form of our buildings. This is a new chapter designed to promote desired character and development, which is a goal that we heard extensively in the public processes associated with the audit and the comprehensive plan. It defines the various building types and the specific standards for each and which belong in each district. This is essentially utilized to provide an applicant an idea of the types of buildings that would fit into the neighborhood where the project was happening, so that you don't end up with architectural dissonance or buildings that are out of scale with those that are around them. It includes standards for building placement, height, and lot dimensions in addition to those in Chapter 3. Within the existing code, the uses in specific conditions were spread across multiple chapters. In some cases, certain uses were spread into the very deep chapters of the code, which would require an intimate knowledge of the code and how to interpret. That terminology was not always clear or consistent for applicants, and it was difficult for not only applicants local, but also developers to navigate and understand when proposing or preparing development packages for review. The existing code also is very strict in its separation of uses, whether they be those that occur in residential zones, which would be only houses or residences, in commercial zones, which would be only commercial uses, or industrial uses that would only be allowed in industrial uses. Through the public processes associated with the comprehensive plan, the public expressed a desire for more walkable, more mixed-use neighborhoods, where certain amenities would be able to be accessed by foot or by bike, as opposed to just being a vehicular passenger and traveling distances to access those things. And so, the new code contemplates not only allowing, but encouraging, a very meaningful mix of uses. It centralizes the regulation of uses and associated use-specific conditions using a table. It provides a more comprehensive and organized approach to defining permitted accessory and conditional uses. It adds and improves use conditions for clarity and consistency. A key advantage of integrating the conditions into the code is that it allows for administrative approval within the department, and for someone who comes to us currently due to a restriction on the size of their lot and the lot coverage requirements and the setback requirements, we anticipate fewer needs for variances to make those projects come to fruition, and that is advantageous for developers and builders, because it provides predictability and transparency in the regulations, and does not require bringing a proposal to a board for secondary decision-making. The code also allows for context-appropriate mix of uses by right in many cases. A great example of this is neighborhoods that traditionally existed in Butte, where you would, as a child, be on your bike with your friends, and then you would go to the lake market, and you would buy candy during the midday. Under this particular code, those types of uses that are very historically appropriate and well-loved by residents of our community would be permitted and allowed. The current code would not support that without the use of a conditional use permit or a variance, but it would allow small coffee shops to sell a newspaper, to sell coffee, and you could walk there instead of having to drive to Walmart or Safeway or another grocer. Chapter 6 focuses on the key general regulations. The existing code contained various regulations that were scattered throughout different sections and chapters, and generally lacking a consolidated and easily navigable structure. And many of the challenges when calculating distances and measurements were unclear, and it led to a lot of disagreement that would often lead a project to the zoning board of adjustment, rather than having clear guidelines for staff to make decisions within the office. So the new code consolidates and updates the general regulations that apply across zoning districts and throughout the code. It establishes a unified set of standards for setbacks, for lot coverage, for height, and other dimensional requirements by district, and illustrated for clarity. You'll notice on the presentation, there are two images that are included here. This is going to be very reflective of the code format moving forward. We will see illustrations that share how we will measure when we are calculating development width on a parcel, where you are trying to build multiple buildings. It will show us how we will measure building height from the street, rather than the total building height from a walkout basement to the peak of the roof. This ensures that we have consistency in how we approach every proposal that comes into our office, because you, as the applicant, and we, as the staff, are reading from the same songbook. The new code aims to provide clearer and more consistent standards for measurement, and making it generally more user-friendly, and simplifying the application and the enforcement process. Chapter 7 of the code discusses the parking and loading requirements that are associated with our office's evaluation. The existing code in general uses somewhat outdated parking and loading requirements that have led to the over-provision of parking, the excess of impervious surface, and lack of context-sensitive design. What does this really mean? This means that we are requiring buildings and businesses in our community to develop parking lots that are large for the most busy shopping day of the year, but are rarely fully occupied every other day of the year. And instead of requiring those parking spaces to be provided, we are providing flexibility in more flexible parking and loading structures and standards that reflect best practice. It now includes provisions for shared parking, so if you have a new development right next to Walmart, rather than having two very large lots, it would allow, in some cases, for the sharing of those parking spaces, so that you don't over-provide parking. What does that mean in a real sense? It means that there may be more land available for commercial or any type of development. In a mixed zone, it means that we may have parking spaces that can be used by the people who are living in their apartment complex at night, but during the day, the business on the first floor can occupy those parking spaces. It also allows for flexibility, and that really has to do with parking maximums. Rather than requiring a minimum number of parking spaces, we achieve this by saying you cannot have more than this many parking spaces. It also provides design standards that provide relief in parking provision if the developer is interested in providing additional pedestrian infrastructure to connect businesses together, or apartments to businesses or restaurants, or in some cases, bike parking. This is intended to not only provide an aesthetic upgrade to the community, but also to integrate parking into the urban fabric of our buildings. Chapter 8 focuses on the landscaping, the buffers and the open space requirements. The existing landscaping standards of the code are outdated and a bit unclear, and they have not necessarily proven effective in promoting an attractive, resilient, or context-specific landscaping requirement for our community. The existing buffering standards are not flexible or necessarily contextual to appropriately transitioning between uses in appropriate ways. A great example of this would be Harrison Avenue, and many of the restaurants that have drive-throughs along Harrison Avenue, and then just to the east, Florence Avenue, where you have a majority of homes. What this chapter would do is really be looking at effective buffering between that drive-through restaurant and the residents behind it, to make sure that both of those uses can coexist together, so you're not hearing the speaker when you're in the backyard with your family. The chapter will provide more comprehensive and detailed regulations for those landscaping requirements, and how we buffer uses, and how we provide open space. It will aim to enhance the aesthetic quality of developments, really focusing on the provision of landscaping that not only looks nice, but it is specific to our environment. In our Zone 3-4 climate, it is very hard to keep certain plants alive without significant additional maintenance, and so we will provide for those requirements within the code, but we'll focus on using plants that we believe will stand in the duration. This is really about creating a dedicated chapter with expanded requirements for these uses to tailor zones and use, and incorporate low-impact development practices, tree and buffer standards, that will generally improve how the community looks and the environmental outcomes associated with those. Chapter 9 focuses on signage. The existing code had outdated and disorganized sign regulations that were very difficult to adhere to and enforce, and the new code is really focusing on amending the sign regulations to comply with legal precedents. Therefore, the chapter will provide updated and more detailed regulations for signs, aiming to balance business visibility with aesthetic considerations and the public safety measures associated with the over-provision of signage, restructuring the standards with definitions and regulations by type, aligning with legal precedent, and clarifying their use and application. And the new sign chapter will be significantly reorganized and focused on location, size, and design, rather than the content of the sign. The environmental design and hazard mitigation chapter is a new chapter that we are presenting as part of this code update. The existing code did not have provisions related to environmental concerns or hazard mitigation, but the recently adopted Resilient Butte Sharp Plan emphasizes the community's desire to incorporate sustainable development to protect residents and our natural assets. This chapter will contain new content focused on integrating environmental considerations and hazard mitigation strategies as it relates to protection from wildfire and also flooding. It aims to protect natural resources, including the drainages that lead to Black Tail, Silver Bow, and the creek, and the Big Hole. Very appropriate timing. And promote sustainable development practices. Not all provisions are strictly environmental, but include co-benefits, such as responsible growth and longevity of key infrastructure. We will be focusing not only on how to develop when you are close to a mine yard, to ensure that we're not disrupting culturally or historically sensitive areas, but also managing how we will develop when we are close to drainages, so that we're not negatively impacting those areas, or how a person who is interested in conducting brownfields redevelopment in our community can do that. One of the ideas I always think about is when I was growing up on West Park Street, the West Side Video was located in what was a historic gas station. It's a really incredible little building, and it then became Park Street Pasty. We love those kind of things happening in our community, and we want to see the beneficial use of those things. However, it is important to know that right now, the code would not necessarily support that, and the brownfields redevelopment of that gas station would cause an undue burden on somebody to develop that and make sure that it's environmentally safe. We are integrating these kinds of guidance measures into the code to make it possible for us to see adaptive reuse of some of our wonderful historic assets, so that they can but also the procedures and processes when seeking relief from the regulations. The code, although generally providing administrative relief to the public, will still include provisions for variances in certain instances, for conditional use permits when required, and for appeals when a person feels aggrieved of a decision. Chapter 13 focuses on nonconformities. The existing code addresses nonconformities in obscure places in a very wordy way, hindering positive redevelopment and maintenance of properties, restricting flexible design and adaptive reuse. For example, in the neighborhood generally located south of Butte High School, we're talking really about Arizona to Maryland Street, Aluminum Street to Third Street. This was traditionally, in Butte's history, a railroad neighborhood. Many of the people that lived in this neighborhood were railroad workers, and they lived in two, three, and fourplexes with their families. In the 1978 zoning update, that particular area of our community was zoned CM, which is light industrial commercial, and residential living is expressly prohibited. Within the current code, there are provisions related to nonconformities that do not allow for any modification of a nonconforming use. As you can imagine, and in some cases have seen, there is some disinvestment in that neighborhood, and the code does not encourage reinvestment in that neighborhood. So in response, we understand that through zoning processes, nonconformities can be a result. So this chapter provides updated and clearer regulations regarding those nonconformities. It includes specific standards for the management of nonconforming lots, structures, uses, sign, and site elements. It aims to balance the protection of existing property rights with the goal of the new code, allowing for flexibility in maintenance, repair, or even the expansion of nonconforming uses or structures under certain conditions. The new code seeks to provide a more practical and equitable approach to managing nonconforming situations. The new code overall should reduce the number of nonconforming lots, uses, and structures throughout the city and county. Another example would be Harrison Avenue between Cobbin and Grand Avenue. When you drive down Harrison Avenue, you see a number of historic, single-family homes that have been modified into commercial uses. In some cases, those are still used as housing today. When we look at the code, we may consider using, allowing single-family housing like you see there today to be a building type that we would suggest in that area, thus making those currently nonconforming homes conforming, but allowing a greater flexibility of the type of things that can go within those uses, or in those structures, like a coffee shop or the corner bookstore. Chapter 14 focuses on enforcement and penalties. The existing code had provisions for enforcement and penalties, but really lacked clarity and teeth. The squishiness of those really has led to challenges in ensuring compliance and follow-through with our work to ensure the outcome that is intended when zoning. So the audit recommended consolidation and clarification of enforcement tools and responsibilities to support proactive code enforcement. The new code provides updated and clarified provisions for the enforcement of the code and penalties for violations, but before we get to a point where we are issuing a fine or lodging a violation against someone, we really want to have clear guidelines for how to ensure effective and consistent enforcement that really gets to voluntary compliance and deterring those violations. So the chapter now includes procedures that are clear for anyone that is aggrieved by our department's decisions when we initiate an enforcement action, and how they can comply, how they will be notified of violations, how they can remedy the violation, and what the penalties are. This is a response to the audit recommendation to not only align with state law, but to also ensure a right to due process. Chapter 15, Definitions, is just a reorganization to centralize and relocate definitions to the end of the code. Many of the definitions that we have currently are very antiquated and inconsistent between regulations. It was written in the late 1970s, and so the uses that are discussed in the code are very reflective of that time period. We live in the 21st century. The current code doesn't contemplate or even know that the Internet has been invented, and so we don't have provisions that directly respond to the world we live in today. So this chapter provides a comprehensive and updated list of definitions for terms used throughout the code, and it aims to address the inconsistencies in antiquated terms identified in the audit report, ensuring clarity and uniformity in the interpretation and application of the regulations. To ensure that we're communicating generally about the public engagement process as it relates to this initiative, we have a public comment period that is active presently that extends through August 8th, with today's public hearing and a scheduled working meeting at the Planning Board's regularly scheduled meeting, August 28th, and a follow-up public hearing related to the decision by the Planning Board of whether or not to recommend the document moved forward to the Council of Commissioners for their approval, with an intention to introduce the zoning code update to the Commission October 1st. We have held many public engagement sessions up to this point, beginning July 8th and July 15th, and then again on July 24th. We are here tonight for the Council Chamber's presentation and public hearing, and knowing that we will be seeing renewed interest in this initiative, we have added an additional public open house on August 4th. That will be held at noon and 6:00 PM in the Butte-Silverbow Archives auditorium. There are many ways for the public to participate. It's important to note that this zoning ordinance update applies to all currently zoned property within the city and county of Silverbow. So everywhere likely, mostly everywhere you work, likely mostly everywhere you live, will be included in this update. And so the provisions are important to observe, and they're important to read and review and provide public comment on. And so we will be, for sure, accepting public comment through August 8th, and there are several ways to submit that comment. We have an Adobe PDF version of this code on our website, which can be downloaded, and it can be annotated and then submitted to us for those comments to be integrated. We have created a comment sheet. It was recently updated to allow it to be a fillable form, so that it can be updated using computer. Those can be scanned and emailed, or modified, saved and emailed, or hand-delivered to our office. We are happy to sit down with anyone to schedule a Teams or an in-person meeting in our office or online, and then today's public hearing. This is not a set-in-stone schedule, and pending continued interest in the update and pending these substantive comments that are coming in, we may see need to extend that time period to allow for more public participation.
Thank you, Director Crane. Quick question before public comment. Is this presentation available on the website as well?
Yes, Chairman Staitzer, it is currently available on our zoning code update website.
Great. Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll take public comment. Remember, tonight, we are not voting on anything. We are just here for the presentation and to take your comment. If you could, if you could make your comments, if they could be pointed toward the specific provisions in the code, that would be helpful, or the general topic of the code, please keep your comments constructive. Consistent with the Council of Commissioners meeting, we'll do a three-minute limit. I'll give you a wave at two and a half minutes, and if you could try to wrap up. So first, I'll call for proponents, or if you'd just like to make a general comment, you can come up and do that. After we finish with proponents and general comments, if you're an opponent or additional comments, you can certainly do that as well. So at this time, I'd like anyone to come up for proponents or general comments if they'd like to make a statement. Come on up. If you come up to the lectern, if you could state your name and address, there is a button on the microphone.
Hello.
There we go. Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Brian Curry. I live on 940 Lewison Street in Butte, Montana. I'm very concerned that we're going to lose our drive-in theater that's been there for over 40 years. And I feel, I'm excited to go there all the time. And also, it's not right to build industrial stuff, more industrial stuff, that makes noises at the drive-in. And I very support the drive-in. And it's, and I'm glad the Maverick got denied. And that's all for me.
Thank you, Ms. Curian. Any additional comments or proponents?
Is this on?
Yep.
Mike Flannick from Ramsey, Montana. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to have this public meeting. I just have general comments, actually, is all. I was fortunate to have the sole attention of Julie and the staff at one of their public hearings, which was so helpful, because they really helped explaining it well, and they're doing a good job. It didn't need an update, and it is streamlining and bringing things more into the future, like she said, and I'm glad to see that happening. The only thing I want to keep in mind is to think, for you guys and the board, is to think long-term. One, remember that this is a county zoning, not the city of Butte. And it's unfortunate to even go to the county website, and it says, "Welcome to Butte." So we need to make sure we keep that culture and that mindset when you're working on things and planning on adopting it. I agree. The industrial park previously had protections for the drive-in theater. I would like it to be explicitly listed as allowed in that area. Actually, I think the industrial zone probably should stop the tracks. Anything east of that should be more commercial, because there's really nothing there anyway. And there's some other changes that could take place out there. The town of Silverbow is right in the middle of industrial park. It really should retain it, and there's a trailhead there. Retain its residential zoning. There's a rural center district, which I think is a throwback, and I think this is a good time to update that. And I don't know who thought of it or where it came from, but I think it was some sort of weird attempt to serve traffic, interstate traffic. And really, in my mind, we wouldn't want to serve them at all these little exits along the way. We would want to funnel that commercial business into Butte, anyway. And so having Rocker as the only rural center in the county seems kind of silly to me, and I would just get rid of that and keep Rocker zoned, but just do it like you would do any other part of the county or any neighborhood in Butte. Have some mixture of commercial and residential. There are some other things. I tried to read through this after, but it's a lot more confusing when Julie's not explaining it. It seemed so much easier when she just pointed it out. Anyway, so I'm going to issue formal comments on some things that I would like to see changed or added, but one thing I would like you, the Commission, to think about is protecting, I know we're only changing the existing zoning.
Two and a half minutes, Mr. Flannick.
But there's a lot of residential neighborhoods, hodgepodge scattered around the county, that the county approved the subdivisions for over the years. They have no zoning. They have no protection. While the homes in Uptown Butte or the West Side, you know, there's a double standard. They get zoning protection, but none of these other neighborhoods do. And this isn't going to change that. But we can think about the industrial park borders, a lot of residential neighborhoods, and what can we do to protect those neighborhoods when we do this update? So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Flannick.
Members of the Planning Board, Julia, people in attendance, thank you all. I have a couple of general comments.
Sir, could you state your name?
I'm sorry. My name is Mick Rynsock. I live at 3310 Hannibal, Butte, Montana. I was a member of the Tiffet Board for 12 years, and we now have 16 businesses out in the Tiffet. Most of them are at light industrial, and there are some coming in the future. Based on the research we'd done before with the drive-in theater, that intersection, right now, is seeing about between 600 and 1,000 people a day. There are 600 people working out in the Tiffet. There's people that live on the German Gulch, and there's people that come down from Juniper Heights. And we have to have some real consideration, and I think, you know, the code has to be redone and here to be commended for all the work that's gone into it, but 309 pages is pretty hard for anybody to read. We need to really be careful on not getting that intersection overloaded. The Highway Department is concerned. It's not scheduled for a rebuild for two more years, right? And so that's a major concern of mine, and I also think it would interfere with future development in the Tiffet. And to me, there's a rather easy solution to most of it. It's really complex, and I don't think it needs to be as complex and as detailed as it is. But the 17 acres that is near the highway and the acreage of the drive-in theater, you can make that area, separate it out, and make that commercial. It does not have to be part of the high-industrial area. And I think there's a question on light industrial and heavy industrial, and how much should be heavy industrial. But I think you really need to consider the importance of the history. It's the last drive-in theater. It's got great historical value. It's going to have value that grows as this community grows. When we were having the issue with Maverick and the truck station, I had a lady from Sydney call me and say, "I've been ringing my family for 30 years for a weekend in Butte, Montana, to go to the drive-in theater." And the number of people, we had 1,000 signatures at that time, a large percentage are out of town, that use this as a destination station, and it draws a lot of business in the community. And I think retention of small business is key to maintaining this community, and I think that is one of the keys to maintaining the community. And it's essential that you give special attention to that drive-in and classify it as commercial and outside of the industrial zone. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jim Kavitch. I reside at 2835 White Boulevard here in Butte, Montana. Here as a citizen, and I'd just like to say a few words and commend the Planning Department for being forward-thinking, but I want to take a step back. I'm one of the oldest people in this room, so I'm going to tell you. I was part of the economic development team when we moved the South Port out of North Parkmont, the Port of Montana, out to the Nexus, where they cross on two major Class I railroads with BN and UP at the time. And we moved that in 1988, in the prospect of watching it grow. And you look, take a look at it, it's almost taken 40 years to accomplish what that planning did back then, and what it's, you know, what it is today, the home of 800 jobs and still growing. And it's been the good forward-thinking here in Butte and doing the right job of planning, so I want to commend everybody for doing that. I got to tell you, when I was in high school, I won't tell you when that was, could have been in the '70s maybe sometime, but I would tell you, I took a few girlfriends to that drive-in, and now I take my grandkids to the drive-in. So there's a way. Where there's a will, there's a way, and everything will work out with the proper planning and the proper input. This thing can coexist and live and create This thing can coexist and live and create jobs for the community, good jobs, and then also have good leisure activities like the drive-in. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kambich.
As an audio engineer, I have to make sure this is working. My name is James Jones. I live at 1647 Hancock Avenue. I am a local historian specializing in Butte history and theatrical history. I will start this talk with a small thing. I will mention a few names. The Rialto, the Montana, our own historical Motherlode Theater, in which I am a historian for.
Go Motherlode!
Go Motherlode! Historical theaters like the Rialto, which burned down in Deer Lodge. What did we do? We restored it. We brought it back. And the reason why we bring back and we preserve our history is because things like the Silver Bow Drive-In Theater offer us not just a place to relax and enjoy and sit back and have fun, but it also gives us an opportunity to sit and experience a bit of history in which we can pass on through our wondrous generations. Now, I truly do believe that there is a need to grow our community in a great way. I also sit as a personal friend of Robert Poor. Now, if you're not familiar with Robert Poor, if it wasn't for people like Robert Poor or Gus Miller, we would not have a historical theater in our city of Butte. We would have torn down the Motherlode Theater. And I will remind you that, as he said, "We must protect our education and our recreation." With that, I leave you with a simple statement that was said in this exact room a while back in a discussion on whether or not to put in a skate park for our community and our kids. This statement is from the Archbishop, David Fatah. He said these simple words. "If you do not educate and recreate our children, I will then soon and quickly show you a child that you have chosen to incarcerate." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Hi there. I'm Holly Hansen. Turn it on.
The microphone is on, Ms., if you could just pull it close to your mouth.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. A little nervous here. I have the drive-in theater with my family. We've been there for forty-seven, forty-eight years. Pretty soon it'll be fifty. The years go by really fast. And I do believe, I know the area's changed, but with change should come a desire to protect those already in the community. Table 1, 5-1 identifies which uses are permitted and those that are not permitted. Those that are not permitted become non-conforming. This updated draft, while attempting to make permitting easier, also seems to target non-conforming uses as obsolete. I felt rather targeted. Where does a drive-in theater belong? There's no definition of one in your updated zoning draft. It appears that this document would write the drive-in out of our history books. Outdoor entertainment venues are permitted in the uptown core, but the drive-in theater's not listed under outdoor entertainment, and a drive-in theater needs dark space, needs space and dark skies, something not found in the uptown core. Where the Silver Bow Drive-In is located has always been a perfect spot. It's currently in the RM2 zone, which likely will become a high-intensive, heavy industrial zone, and the definition of heavy industrial places this area, puts the drive-in at risk, makes it non-conforming by definition. Are all the businesses that are proposed in the H1 zone heavy industrial? I don't know. Are they an integral part of the ancient heavy industrial? I don't know. I'm asking you, the board, to allow protections for all properties, areas, all property owners in this RM2 HI zone, permitting and non-conforming. Perhaps the area closest to the interstate should be commercial and allow protections for the drive-in and its neighbors on the hill. We believe the Montana Connections Park and the transportation hub would not be what it is today, that the drive-in had not made concessions early on. We were the only ones out there besides Stocker and the railroad. Those concessions allowed a water line and sewer line easements, including trading properties so the bridge could be realigned, and then created wetland credits for the county. The county received an employment boost and an increased tax base. What did the drive-in get in return? An eighteen-high-foot fence on side two and a smaller, similar fence on side one, more lights, noise, traffic, and now a zoning update.
Ms., you have thirty seconds.
If you, the board, see other options on how Silver Bow Drive-In can remain viable and thriving business in Butte Silver Bow without altering the established operations, then please collaborate with us. We look forward to pursuing positive changes in this zoning update that will protect the drive-in for future generations.
Thank you.
Hi. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. My name is Allyn Jonart. I own the drive-in with my parents. Sorry. For many towns, the local drive-in is a landmark, something residents are proud of and visitors remember. Luckily for you, Butte, we still have one. However, due to updated zonings, this could quickly disappear if measures are not taken to help protect and preserve the drive-in. We are a proud asset to Butte, a place where families from near and far come to create lasting memories. Whether it's a once-in-a-lifetime visit or a cherished tradition, they spend money in Butte. One night in June, we had a hundred and seventy-one cars. Fifty-one of those cars were from out of town or out of state that I know of, that, like, you get around trying to talk to all of them. Reading into the Planning Board zoning draft, I find it very sad to say we are non-conforming and will need to survive without help. It's like sending someone out into the woods with no tools and hope they survive. In the presentation on Slide thirteen, it says it aims to balance the protection of existing property rights with the goals of new zoning code, allowing for more flexibility in the maintenance repair or even expansion of non-conforming uses or structures under certain conditions. However, page 264 for Chapter thirteen, quoting, "It is the intent of this ordinance to permit those nonconformities to continue until they are removed, but not encourage their survival." So that statement does not match that. When my parents bought this land back in 1975, fifty years ago, the area looked nothing like it does today. There was no grain terminal, no commercial development, and certainly no indication it would turn into what it has now. They didn't buy it for the anticipation of an industrial growth. They bought it for the open space, the dark skies, the peace of mind that came from not bothering anybody, and they could run their business. All existing businesses in the current RM2 should be permitted to stay and be protected, including the drive-in. The county should want to help keep those businesses going and help them survive. There should not be discrimination against an existing business. So I propose any new business that comes will need to follow the new zoning codes. They should have rules and limitations, just like the HI permitted for the data center. So for a data center out there, they have to provide visual screening, reduce noise levels, have exterior lighting standards, dark sky compliant, light pollution. So why can't all new businesses that are considered HI be required to have those same rules and protect us? This is more than just a business for my family. This is our livelihood and my family's legacy. I have two boys that are dying to run this. They're nine and twelve. We have a great passion, and we want to continue our legacy to the Butte community and surrounding areas. So I ask for your help today and make the correct zoning changes so we can survive.
Thank you, Ms. Jonart.
Hello. My name is Jen Sanson. I also operate the drive-in theater with my family. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight and thank the Planning Board and all the members for, I'm sure it's a very hard job and a thankless job at times, but thank you. So I'm not going to go into the zoning ordinance details and changes that are proposed. Well, the changes we've proposed can be found in our comment that's been submitted on the behalf of our attorney, Kim Wilson. But I would like to speak for a moment on what the drive-in provides to this community. Storytelling is the oldest form of entertainment. Historians suggest that storytelling developed not long after development of language itself. At the drive-in, we're in the storytelling business. We use digital light projection and sixty-five-hundred-watt bulbs to throw images on a screen that are sixty feet tall. So before the digital projection, we ran thirty-five-millimeter with Zeon lamps, and before that, it was Carbon Arc. But the technology changes, and the core concept is the same. We throw light at a screen. Now, if that screen is already lit from another source, be it direct or indirect, that lighting alters the black levels that we can achieve. Black levels make a huge difference in the fidelity of an image, and improper black levels, pictures are a muddy mess with no detail. You're losing bits of the story. I don't know about anyone else, but if I'm in attendance at a theater and bits of the pieces of the story are missing, I'll probably wonder why I'm there. If your internet service provider can't give you a coherent video stream, you'll probably get new internet. The story matters. And there may be detractors who would say that I'm only up here to keep development away, and my only motive is profit. Well, my family and I, if my family and I held profits as our main objective, I wouldn't be speaking here today. There would already be big rigs as far as the eye can see out at that Silver Bow exit. And people would drive by, and they'd point, and they'd say, "There used to be a drive-in there." Well, we want to be there, and we hope that you guys help us continue to be there.
Thank you, Mr. Sanson.
Hello. My name is Chris Sherrill. I live at 101 Modest Canyon. I do support the drive-in as well, but I'm going to talk a little bit about a different thing. And to my knowledge, this is kind of a work in progress. But a lot of the land use-specific area, we live on Modest Canyon in an R1S-zoned that currently allows agriculture, agricultural livestock. So when I moved here, finding a space for my horses was very important, and I was able to find a spot next to Modest Canyon Trail, which is a horse-friendly trail. The proposed changes change R1S to most likely suburban residential, which no longer would allow livestock or horses. And this affects the East Ridge, south of Butte, Black Tail Loop area, where there are currently a lot of horses. So I think that a lot of things need to be looked at as far as land use, you know, so it's just not copied and pasted from a different area. So, because I would like to be able to keep my horses and build a nice horse property for possible future generations as well. Another thing that doesn't seem to be addressed is, like, urban camping or commercial camping as well. A little bit of contradictions in Chapter Five and Chapter Eleven on what's allowed in what areas. But yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sherrill.
Hi. My name is Darian McCracken, and I live over on 822 Emma Street. So first, I'd like to state that I am all for the growth of our community, and I will give credit where credit is due. But what I'm about to say is going to take precedence in this moment in time. For a city that prides itself on its historical value, I feel this county has made it abundantly clear that they underestimate the significance in a landmark like the drive-in is not only to Butte, but our nation as a whole. It has been a disappointment to see that not only it has an avid supporter of this dedicated business and its family roots, and as a member of the community, that it is not being recognized with the proper respect that I believe that it truly deserves. The Butte Silver Bow Drive-In is not just a movie theater to be pushed to the wayside and forgotten for such things as, you know, industrial use or things like that, because you can look everywhere and you can see that. That's one thing about Montana that we don't get, is you don't have skyscrapers, you don't have a concrete jungle, which, in that case, I'm pretty grateful for. It holds more sentimental importance than anyone, I feel, that some of the committee understands. It has been there and will continue to be worth fighting for. I know that we can make those progressive stances in our community, find those zoning boards, whether it be for such as the livestock, as that gentleman said, and still keep the things that make Montana and the Silver Bow community what it is. We don't want to turn it into something that I know a lot of people don't want it to be. But I also come from Lewistown, Montana, where an interesting state from Jen's. We had a drive-in theater once upon a time, and because of the industrial zoning, it is no longer there. So oftentimes, when I go to visit my own hometown, I point in that direction and say, "I saw my first movie in that drive-in." And now it's just a giant hole where there's nothing left. So I don't want to see that happen for not even, like, the storytelling or just the camaraderie, the community of this town, but also to just protect what's important for the community. Because Butte wouldn't be what it is without the people here. And that's what I got.
Thank you, Ms. McCracken.
Hello. My name is Janice Sherrill. I live on 101 Modest Canyon Road, and Russell Leary is our commissioner. I also looked at the zoning ordinance draft, and I really appreciated the efforts that the Planning Committee has made to inform all of us of what's going on, and they speak clearly, answer our questions. They've been amazing. When I read the document without them, I saw that passive recreation is permitted in all residential zones. And when I looked at passive recreation, it says, so, all residential zones. Passive recreation uses are limited to hiking, fishing, hunting, and non-commercial tent camping. So I'm, basically like any community member, I was concerned to hear that residential zones are going to possibly allow hunting and also unregulated camping. We've had problems with unregulated camping on the East Ridge, and when I spoke with our fire officials, et cetera, and they pointed out all the fire issues that go into that, it really concerned me about the residents on my road, that they weren't necessarily safe to evacuate when there's concerns like that. Which weren't just the cooking fires that were being made, which was obvious, but it was things like driving over the grasses with a hot vehicle, and on and on the list of concerns went. So I would like to make sure that that's just, that concerned me as a parent. The other thing that, I work as an occupational therapist, and I see a lot of accessibility issues throughout Butte. And while I saw that sidewalks are mentioned, I was hoping there would be a little bit more about accessibility of those sidewalks, because right now, most of my clientele cannot get around the city of Butte because of the sidewalks. There's not, every now and then you see some good ones with ramp access, et cetera, but it would be nice if that was defined more about what that meant. Our population is only aging, the majority of it, and it's going to continue to be a problem. We don't have enough caregivers to help people get around. They need us to plan that into our community. Along those lines, we also struggle with accessible recreation. A lot of our buildings don't allow for that easily, those beautiful historical buildings. And what I was reflecting on, listening to the drive-in, is that that's actually one of the really unique accessible recreation opportunities for most of my clients. And I'd hate to have that just disappear, when we already are struggling to provide meaningful experiences in their lives. So that was all what I had to say. I appreciate your guys' efforts to build the city of Butte. My family's been here for five generations. I'm a transplant. My husband brought me to the drive-in for a date when we first moved here. He thought that was meaningful, and I liked it, too. Thank you for all your efforts to build this city. I appreciate it. My family appreciates it. Thank you.
Scaryer than I imagined. Yes. I am amazed that...
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, Jennifer Curry. My son, Brian. My son, Brian Curry, was the first to speak, nine-fourteen Lewistown. Yes, and he takes me to the Drive-In twice a week. And, I find it very surprising that all the buildings that are coming up, new buildings, seem to either be pot shops, pot shops, or bars. And the only real place I feel safe is at the Drive-In, because I don't drink. I don't smoke pot. I, I'm just a normal, I don't know, a Diet Dr. Pepper addict. Yes, and, I think it's a scary thing when you go down a certain street in Butte, that you have to hold your breath if you're allergic to pot, the smell of pot, because of it, because of the smell. And I'm afraid of the zoning contract bringing more of those shops in, modernizing, because that's what modernizing seems to be doing lately. And that, that Drive-In has saved my son from wanting to move out of this town over and over, because there's not a lot of places to go, that, because he doesn't drink, or smoke pot. I've raised him well, yes, and fifty, fifty years ago, there was a miracle. I was born, and Drive-In opened, and I'm sure that gruff guy back there, who, when he was younger, saved me from getting pregnant a couple times at the Drive-In.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Curry.
Yeah. And, yes, and it was, it just needs to stay open, and again, this zoning is confusing, but it's, it's a scary thing, and I don't like it. Darn it, I don't want it done. There.
Thank you, Ms. Curry. Would anyone else like to offer comments tonight? All right. So, we started the comment period off as proponents, and then getting to opponents, I feel we've kind of mixed that a bit, which is absolutely fine, but I'll ask the question for clarity. Is there anyone that would like to offer specific comments opposing what's been presented tonight, other than what's already been stated? All right. Second call. Third call. All right, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll close the public comment session. Again, to remind everyone, we're not voting on anything tonight, but we, as a board, will ask questions of staff if there are any. And then, we would remind everyone that there is a, another open house on Monday, August 4th, at noon and 6:00 PM at the Archives up the street on Quartz. So, if you are still having questions about anything that was presented here tonight, there is still another opportunity to go ask the very knowledgeable staff on anything that was presented. Okay. So, at this time, we'll open it up for board questions. So, first, I'd just like to comment to staff and the Orion team on the, congratulations on the large effort it is to put together a proposed document like this. As it was stated, the current code is, was not, has not been updated since the seventies, and so that's difficult to make those updates. So, it's very challenging and a very big work effort, so commend the staff and Orion team. First thing, I guess, while the zoning update that was presented tonight is countywide, nearly all the comments we received tonight, you know, were specific to the Drive-In, so maybe to try to touch on a couple concepts there. So, I think I heard comments in two camps, maybe. One was about specific zoning near the Drive-In, and then another camp of questions concerning maybe the language in the code, in the proposed code about non-conformities. So, my question, or maybe I'll just state this comment, for the folks that are concerned about the language and the non-conformities, I would just encourage you to look at the current code, seventeen dot four-eight. That language of, quote, "It is the intent of this title to permit these non-conformities to continue until they are removed, but not encourage their survival," end quote, that exists already in the, in adopted code. That is not a new statement, so just want to make that known. What the new code does do, it takes that same comment in Chapter Thirteen of non-conformities, but it does allow additional flexibility that's not in the current code, so normal maintenance, improvement for handicap accessibility, fencing, landscaping, wiring, or plumbing. So, that is just a general comment for the audience, that, just a point of clarification. All right, I gather my thoughts. Does anyone up for the board have a question or a comment for staff? Oh, sir, we're not taking questions at this time. The public comment is closed. Thank you for that. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Chairman. I do have a couple questions. One question would be for staff, with the, the mixed use into the communities, meaning you could have, you know, the Lake Market example is a great example, whatever store that used to be down on Cobb. I can't remember, the A&E or E and whatever, I probably got it wrong. R&B, thank you. Actually, I drive by there every day, I forgot. But I'd be grateful if there was Swedish Fish there right now. I'd walk down there every day and get them. But my, I guess my, with the variance process, like, I feel like before, it was like, oh my goodness, we did twenty, two-hundred-and-fifty variances last year, and it was a concern of people and whatever. And if it, so if we lower that, and then it's left to the staff to do that, and you don't have to come to a board to do that, that is great, and, but then, will there still be a variance process, and that would just be established by you, the staff? My question makes sense?
Director Crane.
Chairman Steitzer, Member O'Neill, members of the board, yes. In all instances, under state statute, a variance procedure is necessary. We see many variances in Silver Bow County, because there has been a past practice to allow for what we call use variances. And use variances allow for the variance of the type of use that can occur within a zoning district. They are no longer considered best practice, because one of the anticipated outcomes of zoning a community is that when a developer or a property owner buys their home, they buy their home in a district that allows a specific set of uses to happen there. And they can say, "Okay, I buy my house today, and in ten years, I can understand that there will still only be houses and coffee shops or restaurants that are less than a thousand square feet in my neighborhood." What they don't contemplate is someone saying, "I want to open a five-thousand-square-foot restaurant in this neighborhood," and then, all of a sudden, you get a destination restaurant, where many people from the community are driving from lots of neighborhoods or lots of places to go to that neighbor, that restaurant. And it introduces an additional level of traffic, or potential noise, or other nuisance, like they're cooking a lot of steaks. And I know we all love to smell the Derby when we drive down Harrison Avenue, but, you know, sometimes you want to smell barbecue that's in your neighbor's yard instead. And so, it's really about what you can anticipate in terms of the types of uses and the intensity of those uses in your neighborhood. And so, the code is moving away from those use variances, and instead is providing a greater opportunity for a mix of uses that provide predictability, that there's never going to be something that could come before you that would change what you can anticipate to happen in that place where you have made your investment. So, that being said, variances under the Supreme Court's definition really have a very explicit and specific use, and we have to evaluate those based on three criteria. Is it doing substantial justice? Is everybody being able to be treated fairly? Is it maintaining the intent of the ordinance to create predictability? And is it helping provide regulatory relief for a circumstance that is on the land that makes it nearly impossible to align or follow the rules that exist? And that's really specific landscape, topographic, or geologic situations. So, for example, you might have a rock outcropping on the Butte Hill that is right in the center of your lot, and it makes it nearly impossible for you to build a house there, because there is a giant dugin' in the way. Instead of having to just do what we say and build your house right in the middle and modify your foundation around that rock, you can come to the board and you can say, "I have this serious issue on my property, and I need relief from the setback requirements that you are requiring. I have to build my house ten feet closer to the street, because I can't have, I won't have a basement otherwise." And that's really how we define hardship that's experienced by a property owner and why the variance process would provide that person with relief.
Okay. Ms. Jack Shaw.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Crane, I just have some questions. I, one thing that I wanted to know, is there a way for us, I have two questions, actually. Is there a way for us to reframe that language? In Chapter Thirteen, I realize that it's in the current language now, but is there a way for us to step back and reframe that, or make it so that, you know, we take care of legacy properties or legacy businesses, or, you know, the gentleman brought up now that if this goes through, then his property wouldn't allow horses, for example. Then, I would imagine we would grandfather him in, and he'd be allowed to keep his horses, but then when he sells the property, maybe those folks that buy the property would not be allowed to have horses. So, I just want to know how, how do we, as a county community, work with our folks to ensure that those kinds of things don't happen, not only on a business side, but on a personal side? You know, if things aren't allowed in my neighborhood currently, the new zoning goes through, and then they're allowed, what, you know, what happens next for me?
Director Crane.
Chairman Steitzer, Member Jack Shaw, members of the board, yes. There is always a procedure to modify, and in particular, before the board would make a recommendation to the Council of Commissioners, the comment that has been received by the public will be categorized by the staff and presented to each of you in an unedited format. And the working meeting that we have planned is an opportunity for you, as the board, to consider those comments that have been provided to you, and deliberate the merits of those comments, and how to make the code consider them and potentially integrate them. One of the things that is important to note when doing that is that the future land use or the zoning for a area must conform with this place-type designation for that area. And so, we will need to do a lot of work to make sure that we are aligning our recommendations in the code to meet the requirements of the comprehensive plan. But there is always the opportunity for flexibility, and we can accomplish that through modifications to language or the imposition of conditions that would be embedded in that Chapter Five, where we start to look at the use conditions. I would like to say thank you to the Sherrill family for attending one of our open houses a couple of weeks ago. I think that the staff was pretty flabbergasted when we realized that we had omitted horse properties. It was definitely an oversight in the editing process. But I think for us, it really illustrates the vast importance of the public's participation in this process. Each of us, whether we be board members or we be the staff in the office, are reviewing and contributing content to this zoning draft from our unique perspectives of where we live and where we work and how we spend our free time. And it's, it's really important that everyone consider not just the impacts that this will have on the things that they love, but also the places that they live, and make sure that they are looking at the code to understand, you know, what potential impacts or changes, whether they be good or they be bad, might come from this code, and then communicate with you as a board to make sure that their issues and concerns are reflected, so that we can understand them, and where possible, respond to them, and hopefully result in a code that works for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. My second question, as someone who's sat on the variance board for a long time, I am very excited to see this new zoning go in, but I have a question kind of regarding the next steps, so what those look like. So, you had mentioned that we'll have a working meeting and such, public comment is still coming in. There's no anticipated, if I understand correctly, deadline for when we have to adopt this moving forward, right? It'll give the board time to work on the document and to work with you and staff to ensure that we take those public comments into effect. There's not like a timeline, correct? Like a deadline, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Director Crane.
Chairman Steitzer, Member Jack Shaw, members of the committee, that is correct. You know, I think everyone knows that I would edit a document until I'm blue in the face, and ultimately, it wasn't going to get any better the more I looked at it. It needs more eyes on it, and then we just said, "Okay, it's time to put this out there, good, bad, or indifferent. We need public comment." No, there is no drop-dead deadline with this. Realistically, we want to work through the challenges and come to resolution, which I think is a reflection of the number of open houses and public meetings we've had to this point, and our willingness to continue to schedule those so that we can get it right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just have one more question, Director Crane. I was at one of the open houses, someone asked about a map, and I know that at this point, we don't have like a proposed map. Is there any way for us to put something together so that folks could see the overlay between existing zoning and what the proposal looks like into a map form that would make it easier for comprehension, or is that something that happens after we adopt the final document?
Director Crane.
Member Steitzer, Member Jack Shaw, and members of the board, at this point in time, we are directing all questions related to the map to the comprehensive plan place-type map, because that particular map responds to the future characteristics, both the uses, the policies, the design character, and the mobility structure that we are anticipating for each of these neighborhoods. It really allows us to look at this from a very high level before we get too specific, to make sure that the policy is right before we start applying it specifically to neighborhoods. However, as part of the overall comprehensive process to rezone the community and put this regulation into place, we will put together a map, but for this point in time, we are focusing on the document itself, using the place-types map as the guide.
Mr. O'Neill.
Chairman, just another kind of a question on, and a comment as we go through this. So, as we change the zoning, I know the zonings need to be changed, but it's, if, like the horse property, well, I'm very grateful that's brought up, because if I want to, if I want to buy the Sherrills' place to have horses out there, I don't want to have to deal with that later, and I don't want, if the Sherrills decide to build some sweet place and they want to sell it, I want them to make money off that if I buy it off them, right? I mean, I'm not, I'm just being totally truthful on that specific situation. And, so, we can't change that. I think that'd just be horrible. That's the cool parts about living on the outskirts of town and having that flexibility, so I hope we can figure out how not to change that, and it's probably been... And if somebody like decides that wants to change that because they don't like horses, but it's already horse property now, so we've got to keep that in mind, kind of like, you know, where we're at with the drive-in, you know, specific things like that. If we have the, the power in this to change stuff like that, that's where it's, I'm grateful that we're able to take our time to do that. You know, eventually we'll get it done. And also just want to, you know, thank the public for really pitching in to do this because it's, it's definitely needed. If you help this process out, even the, we got great staff, as I will tell you, they're really smart and they work really hard on this stuff, but the board, Josh O'Neals doesn't know how to read, and so we need your help and all your things. So everybody out there listening needs to pitch in to make it right, to make this move forward. So thank you.
Director Crane? Do you have any follow-up to that?
You're welcome. Also, you know, I think I'm incredibly proud of the staff and the commitment that they have made across the board over the last year and a half to help result in this code. And I am exceptionally appreciative of our contractor, Orion Planning and Design, who's been with us every step of the way. They have really tried to help us think of everything and to respond to the intentions of a myriad of different perspectives. And I think with, you know, a little further work, maybe a lot further work, we will get where we need to be with this code and to bring it forward for consideration by the council. So thank you to staff and contractor and also all of you, which we appreciate you. Thanks.
Member Sulser?
Yeah, thanks. I'm new to the board, so I had just a couple of questions. I don't know if things have been addressed, but I think Butte has a couple of unique conditions, one being we're city-county. So the comment about thinking about the county is important, and I don't know to what degree that has been discussed, but I think things like the horses and the camping and items like that, if we can focus in a little bit on that next working session, I think that's important. And we also have a lot of existing structures, historical structures, things that are already in place. So I think maybe for us, a unique condition is addressing those more specifically when it comes to a historic building or an existing property or an existing business. So I just wanted to make those comments, and I also really appreciate this document. Having gone through the zoning process, for those who don't know, I'm an architect here in town, gone through this a lot of times with clients, so having a document like this and a staff that's invested in the document, I think is really helpful and really positive for Butte's future. I know a lot of this is scary and the language is meant to confuse you a little bit, but also be vague. So while we want to have some specifics, we want to leave things intentionally vague so that we can have interpretations for existing businesses and properties. So thanks to everyone for the work, and those are just my couple of comments. And then one other thing with the PDF document itself, it references a few different things, such as the map and I saw a couple of other things in there. I don't know if there's a way to like hyperlink things in that document so that when someone comes across that and they're like, "Where's this document that this definition came from?" Maybe that'll help. I know it'll help me and hopefully help the public as well. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Sulser.
I have one more comment. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jackshaw?
Julia, the map online, is, is the new map updated or do, can we get an updated map online, or do you know if it's updated and what shows out there is accurate, up-to-date information?
Director Crane?
Thank you, Chairman Stiteser, Member Jackshaw, members of the committee. The comprehensive plan place types map is an online, ArcGIS online map that is available on our Butte Silver Bow zoning update website. We have had the update website placed on the homepage of the Butte Silver Bow website, and you can follow that link to find the hyperlink to the map. The map itself can also be, like a place type can be clicked on and then it will open the companion document so that you can review that further and read a little bit more about the place types and the characteristics that are sought there. And yes, the comprehensive plan map has not been updated up to this point. It's current.
Thank you. I just would like to commend the staff. I think you guys are doing a great job, and I know from just sitting in on the public meeting, it isn't an easy job to do sometimes when you're representing the community in the county and there's some tough comments coming in, so thank you for your time and your commitment. We really appreciate it. I personally would like for us as a committee to work somehow on a legacy provision, which I think helps. And I don't know exactly how we get that accomplished, but that's something that I would really like us to think about as a board, how we move forward. And I agree with Josh's comments about the importance of what's already there and keeping what's there, but I also think we do need to see growth. So it's got to be a good balance, I think, between all of that.
Thank you, Ms. Jackshaw. Mr. Garf?
Yeah, I have a few comments and a couple of questions for Ms. Crane. Let me get this a little closer. So related to something that the Sherrills brought up earlier, I was looking through that chapter on zoning districts, and the one that says you can camp and hunt, isn't that specific section related to park and recreation uses specifically, not residential?
Director Crane?
Thank you, Chairman Stiteser, Member Garf, members of the committee. Without having the opportunity to delve a little deeper into the content that was mentioned in their comment, the open space conservation and the open space developable uses are, would be specific to those districts that are known as open lands, where we might be looking at an abbreviated set of uses that would be used in a residential zone. I think it would be, it would not be a positive or a good arrangement to have hunting within a residential area. However, you know, having trailheads or having access to parkland in terms of walkability would definitely be something that we would be looking at in residential neighborhoods or access to bike paths or similar infrastructure. And I think that one of the challenges is we look at the place types and we look at the suburban residential neighborhoods. A suburban residential neighborhood is proposed in the country club. It is also references the South Butte area between Five Mile and Nine Mile. It also is relevant to a portion of the Central Butte neighborhood. And really what that is meant to indicate is that that is an area where we want primarily housing, and we want those houses to be supported by other uses. However, in the current code, in particular in what we call the R1S district, which is our suburban residential area, on parcels that are greater than one acre livestock or horses are allowed. And so we would look at likely modifying the use conditions to accommodate something similar, to make sure that those uses are allowed. And in those certain zones where there is a certain density of housing, perhaps certain recreational uses may not be appropriate. And so we could handle it through those or other mechanisms.
Okay, thank you. I have some additional questions. So related to the drive-in, could they apply for landmark status? And if they were to do so, wouldn't that protect the drive-in in perpetuity from any change or development? And I don't know if you're an expert in how to apply for federal landmark status, so I apologize if that, if that question, I don't mean it to be a zinger. I'm just curious.
Director Crane?
Member Stiteser, Member Garf, members of the committee. Yes, the drive-in is eligible, I believe, I believe, to apply for landmark status. However, I am not an expert, and I think that confirming their eligibility status with the local historic preservation officer and the state historic preservation office would be beneficial to ensure that the drive-in is eligible under like the time periods that are of significance. But I, I think that that is something that they should explore in terms of whether or not that designation might provide them protection. In the current code, the historic Uptown Butte area and most properties north of Front Street are considered landmark properties as part of the National Historic Landmark District. Currently, under our provisions, and those properties do not see design review or preservation protections unless they are going to the Historic Preservation Commission when public funds are allocated to them. However, one of the proposals within this code, and this is specific to the historic district, is to create a historic district overlay zone that does require certain additional requirements to make sure that modifications to a historic structure might be proposed to, for review prior to engaging in that process, to ensure that any modifications to a listed structure do not compromise the historic integrity of the building itself. That might mean the materials that are used, it might mean the share of the facade that is windows, to ensure that we retain the historic character of our historic district. So we do have some of those protections, however, they are not specifically related to a listed status, but rather to a overlay or use designation in a zone as proposed.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Crane. Just a quick follow-up to that. So the, the drive-in is currently zoned RM2, which is Ramsey Industrial, is that correct? And so the current zoning around the drive-in does allow for industrial uses? And just a second question, this will be an easy two-parter. You're just going to confirm RM2 zoning and then, and then also confirm, like the zoning map, it's my understanding, the zoning map, the new one has not been developed yet? Is that correct?
Director Crane?
Chairman Stiteser, Member Garf, members of the committee. Yes, the current zoning in the RM2 district is Ramsey M2, and in our code, the M2 designation indicates heavy industrial. And I did forget the second question.
Oh, the zoning map has not been drawn up yet?
That's correct. We have not drawn up the proposed map yet.
Okay. I just have 47 more questions. Really just three or four. So, okay, so regarding the new zoning code, so Chapter 10, the environmental design and hazard mitigation, you're proposing a wildlife urban interface, which is related to wildfire protections and, you know, ensuring that properties are prepared for wildfire. Just like to commend you for adding that to the zoning code. I think it's really important, especially for some of our properties that are a lot closer to forested lands. My question about that is, is that, that WUI, the wildlife urban interface, will that be an overlay or does that apply county-wide?
Director Crane?
Member Stiteser, Chairman Stiteser, Member Garf, members of the committee. We have not determined whether or not the wildland urban interface is an overlay zone because under the current wildfire protection plan, all areas of Silver Bow County fall within the wildland urban interface. And so we may need to contemplate in this context, which is the zoning context, that this might apply to areas where they have less proximal fire protection. So it may be an area where it may take longer for fire services to arrive. And this is about ensuring that plants are drought tolerant and they don't dry as quickly, that there are certain mowing standards along driveways to ensure that there isn't sparking that might cause a risk. And so I think that this is something that when we get to the mapping component of this process, it might look like an overlay district that would apply to certain rural portions of the county to ensure that they are as protected as can be.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Crane. I have a follow-up. So I have a list of really specific questions about Chapter 8 that I think we might take up in our working group, and so I'll refrain from asking them. Chapter 8 is the landscape chapter, and I'm a landscape architect, and so I, first of all, thank you for making it its own chapter and adding some rules and regulations that are going to make this city and county look better, function better, you know, encourage low-impact development, green stormwater infrastructure, plant some trees, have more planting. So thank you for putting that in there. I have, I'll just hold my questions for our working group, but I just wanted to say thank you. Also, nice job with Chapter 7, parking and loading. You've really clarified a lot of the problems with the current zoning code, so well done there. And then, yeah, just lastly, I'd just like to, I know this process has been long and difficult because the current zoning code is antiquated and it's kind of a mess. And if you've ever tried to use it, it's, it's hard to figure out how to get your project built. So, so thank you for taking this on. It's long overdue, so I just wanted to say that we appreciate the effort that you put into it. I know it's been a lot of effort, so thank you.
Ms. Enz?
Thank you. I have a few, just a couple buckets of questions. First, as Mr. Garf said, I really appreciate the, the intentional and thoughtful integration of the SHARP plan into this plan. I had one question specifically about energy. In Chapter 5, Section L, regarding data centers, again, that's a great indication that this is bringing us into our current point in time. Just wanted to name that we know data centers are not going away, they're growing in our backyard in Oliver, Montana, and that they consume an enormous amount of energy and are due to double that energy consumption by 2030. I'm wondering if it's within the purview of zoning to be able to require specifically data energies, or data centers to require clean or slash renewable energy-only energy supply, similar to as is required for cannabis facilities?
Director Crane?
Chairman Stiteser, members of the, or member Enz, members of the committee. I think that it is within the purview of the committee. I think the challenge will be, is it possible under the current regulatory requirements in the state of Montana, which are administered by the Public Service Commission, and whether or not certain renewable reliances are possible to generate the power that is necessary? And would the, would an alternative approach be looking at the combination of certain energy provisions to support the, the data center's demand?
Thank you, Director Crane. I wasn't quite sure if that was a PSC or state and local level. I do have a couple clarifying questions around what's been discussed around the drive-in. So as Mr. Garf had indicated, currently it's, you know, technically non-conforming. And as Chairman Stiteser stated, there are some differences in the proposed code for provisions for non-conforming structures. Could you detail what the current provisions are and what those differences for the proposed code would be, if that makes sense?
Director Crane?
Chairman Stiteser, member Enz, members of the board. Yes, in the current zoning code, non-conforming uses are intended to, are not supported, their survival is not supported at all. And in, and explicitly expansions and improvements, maintenance of those non-conforming uses is prohibited. Knowing that this has somewhat led to either intentional or primarily unintentional disinvestment because it is not allowed, we know that that can negatively impact neighborhoods and their quality. And we have seen it in some neighborhoods in Butte as a result of the current zoning designation. So... So within Chapter 12, the administrative procedure, or, and Chapter 13 in the non-conforming uses section, we have drafted specific content as it relates not only to non-conforming lots, but also to non-conforming uses. And while the language does emulate the current code, which is that the current use is not to be, their survival is not to be encouraged, we do not want those prevailing uses to see disinvestment. And so under Chapter 13, Section D, non-conforming uses, there is specific provisions as it relates to legally non-conforming uses and their expansion. So in the general provisions, it says that you can do repairs and maintenance. Currently, you're not really allowed to do that in a non-conforming use. However, under Section D, not only are you allowed to do general maintenance, but there are provisions for the expansion, the physical expansion of a non-conforming use and the expansion of its footprint to result in increased capacity or activity associated with the use. It also allows for non-conforming use of land outside a building to potentially be intensified, enlarged, or extended by up to half. No legally non-conforming use shall be moved in whole or in part to any other portion of the law or parcel. So it would not necessarily support the reconfiguration, but it would allow for the expansion of the use as it exists. There are also additional provisions for the types of structures that might be in a non-conforming location. I had used that example of Harrison Avenue. You know, if a single-family house type style were permitted in the north part of Harrison Avenue, then that would bring it into conformance. But if it were not, we would have provisions to provide relief for the structural changes that might accommodate a use in that non-conforming structure. It further goes on to talk about non-conformity of signage, accessory uses in structures, non-conforming elements, and non-conforming modular mobile homes as well, really having to do with the safety oftentimes affiliated with older modular mobile homes.
Thank you so much. I just have two, what I hope will be brief questions. I noticed that there is details for designated salvage yards and junkyards. I'm wondering if the staff and board would like to consider a provision for abandonment of property in empty lots that are not designated salvage yards or junkyards? Just something that I know, just walking around my neighborhood on South Washington Street, my little ones like to try to run into some rusty vehicles that are kind of just left out. So I'm wondering, I know that is sometimes a common concern for folks in our residential areas, so just wanted to put that forward. And then my final question might just be a language clarification question. Julie had mentioned something about legacy. I've heard the phrase grandfathered in a few times in, whether it's tonight or some of the open hearings. So I'm wondering, Director Crane, if you could clarify or speak to what something like that could mean in practice, or if even feasible, if that language continues to be used?
Director Crane.
Chairman Stiteser, member Enns, members of the board. When zoning changes, the uses that are happening in the zone right now remain the uses that are allowed to be there. And that is what it means when we say legally non-conforming. They don't conform to the current rules, but they are legally allowed to be there. And so it is not our objective to ask them to cease operations or to make them close or to make them comply with the rules that exist today, which is to say that if you live in a neighborhood and a new zoning designation comes down and it says, a great example is in the detached zone. Currently, when you develop in Butte, you need a minimum of 6,000 square feet to develop your property. Well, the code is providing significant relief to property owners. We're saying, instead of 6,000 square feet, we really think 4,500 square feet is a good amount of square footage to support development. Right now, in one of the, in really any neighborhood in the community, you need to be 20 feet from your next-door neighbor. Well, in many instances, this is the over-provision of grass and maybe you could have a bigger house and cover more of your lot if you were able to have a 10-foot side yard setback. And so in general, in Chapter 3, we are providing broad relief in terms of the minimum yard or minimum lot size. We are providing broad relief in the setbacks. We are providing broad relief in the amount of property that can be covered by structure. All of these are the things that have come to us as part of the variance process. And we know that the existing regulations make it hard to comply. If you can only cover 35% of your lot, it makes it really hard for somebody in Centerville to build an improvement on their property. And so we're saying we're relieving the public. But also, if you are a 6,000-square-foot lot and you have a 20-foot side yard setback, you don't have to build onto your house to comply. You don't have to get smaller or get bigger in order to be conforming. We're just saying that the future, that is the imprint or the designs, features that we want to see and that we believe will help support housing affordability by making it easier to develop more housing or make it easier to create a better mix of uses in a commercial district by having more property or land available to build those structures rather than parking.
Thank you, Director Crane, and thank you, the board, for your patience with my questions. That was all I had.
If you don't mind, Mr. O'Neil, could I just follow up while we're on this topic? So, Director Crane, you did a, you went through the non-conformities with Ms. Enns' question very well. I appreciate you talking generally about different legally non-conforming properties that this code as proposed could apply to, just in the interest of the large public participation concerning the drive-in. As is currently proposed, the drive-in would be legally non-conforming. Is it my understanding that legally non-conforming, they can exist and operate as they have been for the last 50 years as if this proposed zoning code were to go forward?
Chairman Stiteser, that is correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that clarification. Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Chairman Stiteser. My question would be on, it's kind of a follow-up on what Margot was saying on, so if I can buy my neighbor's house and build a garage on it, and I can tear it down and build a garage on it? So that's putting you on the spot. I mean, I'm not going to do that. But I'm just saying, I want to, if I want to buy it and tear it down, like, will this conform to that?
How about this? Maybe instead of tearing down the house, you can possibly build a garage that you might not have been able to build prior because you can cover more of your lot. So you don't even need to buy your neighbor's house. You can just build that with an accessory dwelling unit on top of it.
Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Chairman Stiteser. So the setbacks then, for an alleyway, right? I could be able to just tear my current garage down and not worry about the setbacks in my alleyway then, in this new one?
Director Crane.
Chairman Stiteser, member O'Neil, this is really where I wanted to get with this conversation, actually. I don't know where you live, and so I don't know what zone it would be. However, you may be seeing reduced rear yard setbacks that might allow your garage to be closer to your alley, which means that you might be able to either make your garage a little larger or position it, expand out toward the alley in certain instances, so long as we still provide the appropriate diameter for you to pull into your garage so that it's used for parking rather than, you know, just be in a mono slab in the back of the neighborhood.
Mr. Riley.
I got a question on, part on Mark's and then you answered part of it with the non-conforming for the drive-in. Mark said there's a federal landmark status, but I know you said you're not an expert. But what does that do to protect the drive-in from still developing, like, on that 17 acres? And the lights that the Maverick was going to do? Because it doesn't seem like anything is really protecting them. Even if the landmark says it can stay there and the non-conforming says they can stay there, it can still get all messed up.
Director Crane.
Member, Chairman Stiteser, member Riley, members of the board. So there are a couple of things there. You're correct. A landmark status would not necessarily provide a protection from adjacent uses. But as the public comment indicated, that there are specific use conditions that could be incorporated in the district for the uses that would say, if you look at the economic driver place type in the comprehensive plan, it calls for very wide boulevards and wide landscaped setbacks. And so those might be a use condition that would be affiliated with a certain type of development in a certain type of zone. It may be the requirements for mitigating light or mitigating sound. It might be any number of combinations to meet those initiatives. But no, the landmark status might not provide those certain protections, although it does list the use and the property as an important cultural landmark or landmark generally. Really, those specific use conditions within Chapter 3 would be the thing, it might be Chapter 5, actually, I'm sorry, that would help mitigate those impacts.
Well, I think, like at the working meeting, them are some of the things we need to figure out and the zoning could be changed on that 17 acres or something. Because it's kind of the same thing with the grandfather of the horses. The drive-in's been there forever, and I mean, I got horses, I love horses and stuff, but I also liked the drive-in. If we can help with that, I think it'd be good. Thank you.
Ms. Jackshaw, your light's on.
Mr. Chairman, I'm so sorry. I just have one more question because I want to clarify this in my head. So a non-conforming business or property today exists. Let's say they sell that property. So they put it up for sale and someone else comes in and buys it. Then what happens to that grandfathered, legacy, non-conforming agreement? Are they required then to bring it up to code? Or are they just not allowed to purchase it? And how do we mitigate that? Or how do we address that in the best interest of the community?
Director Crane.
Chairman Stiteser, member, Jackshaw, members of the committee. I think this is a really important question, and I think it's why public comment is so crucial. Within the code, there are certain timelines that are contemplated for a sort of non-use of a use. And that sounds perfectly complicated. I'm sorry. I'm like losing my ability to speak well. Okay, you have a non-conforming use and you decide that you are going to cease your operation and you want to sell your property and you would like to sell it under its current use. That can happen, and within, I believe, the current code states 180 days. If a buyer comes in within 180 days, then it can resume operations as that non-conforming use. So we were just clarifying, under the current, it's 365 days. And then proposed code, it is 180, like, what's half? I'm bad at math. 180 days. But say you have a restaurant and you are closed for 180 days, or we'll say 100 days, and somebody buys it and opens a record store. It cannot resume operation as a restaurant. So those are sort of the provisions that are in there. And they're not intended to be negatively impacting the existing business. It's a way for us to provide a point where we are saying the intention of the future land use plan, under the comp plan, the intention of the code is for this to be the future. And if, unless these conditions are met, it needs to be in compliance with the current code. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I thought that was a good explanation. Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Chairman. So why in that, it used to be 365 days, why cut it?
Director O'Neil, or Director Crane. I just gave you an upgrade.
Chairman Stiteser, member O'Neil, members of the board. I think that this is for your consideration. I mean, it's a draft, it's 180 days, it's what is there? If it is better to be 365 days, I think that that's within the purview of the board to make that recommendation.
Mr. GARF.
I have a question, just related to non-conforming. So this would also apply, and this was brought up earlier, that, gosh, we sure have a lot of marijuana dispensaries and casinos and bars. So isn't there an overlay zone proposed that would seek to limit the quantity of dispensaries in any one location? And wouldn't this, this non-conforming status apply to them as well, such that, you know, if they, if a dispensary closes and it doesn't reopen in 180 days, it has to be something else if it's not, if it's not conforming?
Director Crane.
Member Stiteser, Chairman Stiteser, member GARF, members of the committee. In the code, one of the overlay zones that is proposed is called a transportation gateway. And what this is intended for is the area where people exit the interstate and enter into the community. And it contemplates prohibitions on certain uses. Marijuana dispensaries are one of those that we recommend as our casinos. This is really about responding to the comprehensive plan's place type of transportation gateway to ensure that when people enter into the community, they are greeted by the best face of our community and that certain uses that may fall into into the marijuana dispensary or laundromats or certain uses that are really sometimes essential to the lifestyle of one person but are really not tourism-centric. They're not areas where you would see enhanced architecture or enhanced landscaping that would be a positive experience when people come in. We're not saying you can't have them in the community, but it would be an area where we would maybe say they are not as appropriate as other parts of the community. And, you know, to respond to the question, because I think it is pertinent to public awareness, the state of Montana in the 2025 legislature did pass a bill that has placed a moratorium on the issuance of both dispensary locations and purveyors or dispensary, people who sell marijuana in their dispensary for two years. And so that is a current state law that is applied now. Just as an FYI.
Thank you, Ms. Crane.
Mr. O'Neil.
Last comments. Thank you. This is, thank you, Chairman. Adding on to that is the, and maybe I just overheard this, but they're, currently we're trying to talk about limiting the licenses, right? So just so there's, there's only, say, 15 marijuana licenses. I don't know the number, don't quote me, please. But then it'll make it harder so you can't just get one. So it'll just be limited to the area of Butte, Silver Bow. So that will also help in many different ways, so.
Any other discussion by the board? Okay. I'd say thank you for a great board discussion and thank you to the public for spurring.
I'd say thank you for a great board discussion, and thank you to the public for spurring the discussion. So at this time, we'll take a, well, before I, before we adjourn, I'd just remind everyone, if you, if you have additional questions on the zoning, proposed zoning update, there is an additional open house on Monday, August 4th, at noon and 6:00 PM at the Archives. And if those don't work for you, I'm certain staff will make time for you in the coming weeks. So if you please reach out to them via email or give them a call, I'm sure they'd be happy to do that. So again, thank you all for your participation tonight. I take a motion to adjourn.